Counsel, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Branderhorst, here.
Theon Strachan, here.
Carl Stone.
There.
Auctions were active.
All right, so we just have a quorum. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Support, Banstra, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Theon Strachan?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to appoint Robert Smith, a retired attorney, to fill a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Robert previously served on this commission from 2001 to 2016. If approved, his term would expire May 1 of 2025. Can I get a motion for approval?
So, support.
I'll go DeYoung, Branderhorst, how about that? Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Theon Strachan?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have an opportunity for public forum, so anyone wishing to address counsel concerning any agenda item, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and please try to limit the comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Dea, Branderhorst, any discussion?
I have a question. In the details of our discussion, we talked about accepting it as presented. I had some reservations about the entrances. For instance, the overlay of what was in Zone 2, I believe they called it. Is there to be a time for us to discuss that at all? Or is it merely to accept it as is or not? Just as a...
What, what?
I don't know.
In the consent agenda?
In our minutes from planning zoning last time.
Oh.
The, we left it as, well, the revised guidelines, et cetera. It is basically going to accept it as presented. So at the end of the discussion, staff would proceed with placing resolution on the future council agenda to adopt the revised guidelines as presented.
I think that's item F you're talking about.
These aren't actually numbers, it's just the minutes. But my question is, will there be an option to revise? Or was that our option to revise?
Counsel is always at liberty to make changes to any resolution item that we have this evening. So when we go into presentation, I believe, as Councilmember Branderhorst said, that's item F1 this evening, counsel. And I'll make sure when we point out and talk about the designated areas or the zones that refer, we'll spend some time to discuss those options and address any questions or proposed changes counsel may have.
Okay, any other questions? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Theon Strachan?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, public hearing regarding Monroe Street Improvement Project bids. Mike, would you please explain?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance and those watching at home on telefiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, tonight's public hearing is concerning proposed public improvements to Monroe Street. This is the section of Monroe Street between Oakland Drive and West Third Street. It's red highlighted, the section up on the big board. You heard it right out there right now. It is currently a gravel road. And what's being proposed is to upgrade the street to an urban cross-section, which is commonly referred to as a regular city street. We do have a description of the proposed improvements listed up here as well, where we talk about urban cross-sections, what exactly that entails. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the bid lighting is concerned, we did conduct a bid lighting on February 22. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was just under $176,000. The lowest responsible bidder was Long Beach Construction in the amount of $174,854. And as you can see, we had a fairly tight spread on the bid lighting. The high bid was just over $234,000. Now, in reviewing the bids, our engineer for the project is gardening associates. They are recommending awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which in this case was Long Beach Construction, for the amount of $174,854. Staff is also in agreement with the engineer's recommendation. If counsel were to approve this resolution this evening, project timeline is as follows. We'd issue a notice to proceed right around the first part of May. The final completion date for the project is approximately 20 working days on that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes staff's presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the counsel may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments? Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
Praise the Lord.
Yeah, the engineer's estimate was quite right on for this one.
And there's no way to fit a sidewalk on this new urban cross-section.
I'd like to direct that question back to our public work director. Danny Fire?
There's really very little room. It's part of permanent right-of-way on the north side, or the south side. The north side drops off and we're only adding right-of-way this far and then continuing the slopes because we want to kill the trees over there. And there's also that large width here. Last time we priced for it, it was about $25,000 relocated. So we didn't barge this project down with that and additional right-of-way this time.
We require developers to make urban cross-section. I just think we're running into the same issue on Hazel. Even if we have to do a dog, dog light around that green box or something, I just think that's the right answer.
Could we have Danny speaking in the mic?
On the left side, there's only three feet of, two and a half, three feet of right-of-way behind the... We have no right-of-way here. It's this person's yard. So we'd have to buy or condemn right-of-way on this yard to make that happen. Not that we couldn't add to the project or do it, surely there happened.
Danny, is it a fair statement? Since right-of-way acquisition would have to occur for the sidewalk, that's best treated as a standalone project at that time?
Correct, I'd say so. Those can take six tall months. That sounds like a fair compromise.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any member of the audience wish to comment on this particular item? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Banstra, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Theon Strachan?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6560, entitled Resolution Approving Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Cost, Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the Monroe Street Improvement Project. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Banstra, Branderhorst, any discussion?
Following up on the sidewalk thing, while it would be very desirable, there is no sidewalk from there to Main Street, given the constraints of no right-of-way. While it would be a wonderful thing to happen, I don't think it's going to happen.
You're going east from here.
From there, going east, yes, correct.
Yeah, the right-of-way even gets narrower through some of them. There's just none there. Some of those past sins are really tough to correct. Somebody else now owns it and they're using it.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion for approval, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Theon Strachan?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6561, entitled Resolution Adopting the Architectural Design Guidelines, Fourth Edition. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And it's important to note, as Mayor Dwork stated, what's being proposed is an upgrade, or revision, rather, to the city's architectural design guidelines. Now, if counsel were to present or approve this, this would be the fourth edition as far as the upgrades are concerned. It's also equally important to note that the same design guidelines that are being presented this evening, we talked about and discussed during policy and planning on February 21. A little bit of background on this. In November of 2021, the city council hired Shift Collective to work with our community development committee to revise and update the design review, the design manual, that we are considering this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, when we talk about design, design permits generally, they're intended, or they are required for new commercial buildings or commercial buildings that have additions on them or significant facade changes. When we talk about commercial design permits, generally, they're limited to commercial zoning districts. And when we talk about the commercial zoning districts, those would be the green highlighted areas up on the big board that you can see, and generally, that all the city's main commercial thoroughfares within our community. But let's go ahead, Mandy. It is important to note that we're not proposing any changes or expansion of that. And so we're just simply talking about the standards if a building were to require a design permit, what they would have to comply with this evening. Now, as far as purposes of the manual, we do have a summary of why we wanted to propose changes on this. But overall, this is just an update on the manual. And I think it's also a fair statement as we go through the presentation this evening. If you were to look at our current edition, we have one set of architectural standards throughout the city. What's actually being proposed this evening is three different zones. And each have different entailments or different standards for architectural standards within our community. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And speaking of those zones, we have them listed up on the big board. If you were to look at District Number 1, which is the historic Dutch, that really corresponds well to our current design standards. And so generally, that would be the city's central downtown. And it looks like it would extend west on Washington Street, right out to approximately Breakoff Park, south on Main Street, and down through Oskaloosa Street, up to about Park Street, or right around that area. And it's generally the green highlighted area. As we transition out and extend out, if there's any of these commercial zones within the purple area, that would be a transitional zone. So when we look at the historic Dutch, we move to less of Dutch architectural requirements. It'd be more of a transitional zone. Once we get outside the purple area, if you look at any other area within the city, that would be contemporary architecture standards. So that would generally fall in when we talk about commercial zoning properties, right off Exit 44, off Highway 163, and Exit 40 as well, down here on our eastern community as well. So with that, that's the three different standards that we have. Mr. Mayor, and I know that we had questions, or Dr. Carl Stone had questions on the transition, or the three different zones being proposed this evening. So before we conclude our presentation, we'd like to open inducted questions on the council.
So is there commercial zoning outside the purple? Is there commercial zoning on the west side of Main Entrance? So we have control over the purples area? It doesn't automatically because commercial has to happen, correct? This is an ordinary...
Well, yeah. A couple things. Mandy, if we can go back to the map that has the commercial zoning districts, please? So just to be clear, when we talk about design review permits, generally, they follow commercial zoning districts. Those commercial zoning districts are generally right on the main commercial thoroughfares within the community. So if anything that would be built would incite these green highlighted areas that we have here, that's not changed with adoption of this manual. If we could go, Mandy, to the current map of the district. What's really being proposed is if any commercial zoning districts fall within these areas, what's being designated within the manuals, there's different architectural standards for these highlighted areas. So the architectural standards would be different for the purple area compared to the green highlighted area. And then once we get out to the temporary area out here, they'd be different than the purple area. So they transition, I'd say it less of a touch architectural requirement as we transition out and away from the downtown. And I believe what the committee, the reason why it covers the whole town, their thoughts were, in the event if the city council were to rezone property in the future, or commercial zoning districts in the future, there would not be confusion over what type of standards would apply to those new commercial zoning districts. And that was the intent of covering the entire town, even though the entire town is not currently subject to design review standards.
I think I'm clear. So commercial zoning has to buy whatever the overlay says, and/or Dutch architecture. So west of Exit 44, theoretically, has to go through design review, even though it's not in the purple, because all our commercial zoning has to do that.
Yes. And that area that you talked about right up here, so this would be the very rich development. According to the standards, the committee would use the contemporary design standards for new buildings in that area. So that's very similar to what's currently being... I'll dare you, if you were to go out there and look at the new Chick-fil-A, Smash Park would be good examples of contemporary architecture.
I, were you done with public?
I've looked at it, okay.
Okay. I have just a couple things. I was very pleased that existing businesses were grandfathered in. And I did appreciate that. I really appreciated the glossary in the back of the new binder. And I, Wayne, I'm not meaning to pick on you, but you're the only one that I know. Are you still on the CDC or...?
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay. I had a couple people. I did not see that the guidelines were any less stringent than our guidelines that we have now. Do you see that these guidelines are any more or less stringent? Or are they kind of in line with what we had before, but we've expanded the real estate?
I believe they're pretty much in line with what we have.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of puzzled because I thought perhaps I missed something when I got a little bit of pushback on it. So, but in your opinion, we have not loosened. Okay, thank you.
One of those points is my understanding, if you were to look at it, the green highlighted area is very similar to the current design manual, correct, Jerry? When you go out further from the downtown, when you start getting out here, I believe the examples are what would be accepted would be of a more modern architecture standards. The further away from the downtown you get, that's the intent of the three different zones, correct?
So my other concern would be, as we head into thinking about what Oskaloosa Street corridor starts to look like, I think that green goes all the way to Clark, how's it?
Jerry, help me out. Where does the green area?
At Carson.
Carson, okay.
So that potentially limits options, especially if we do request for proposals and things, of what could be used there based on aesthetics. So I know they spent a lot of time thinking about these corridors, but I think there is a little bit of a, a little bit of a clash potentially on that eastern portion of, of the Easterly. Obviously, the west side of the Oskaloosa corridor, although it would be something for us to think about.
So are you proposing that there are less stringent guidelines to Clark Street?
The green is type 1, same as CBD, correct? So that means everything has to be very Dutch architecturally. So if that's, if we're asking for housing, or I'm thinking off the cuff, multifamily or multi-use, then that building has to look by these guidelines, has to look like downtown Dutch architecture, if we want that to have a different feel, like I think we've chatted about in the past. There's a limitation there. I understand why you want that corridor to feel as you're entering into our center. But to me, I don't feel like it needs to turn the corner to the east. But that'd be my take.
We already have, on that corridor, you have what I still call it, the Scoops and Loops Building, which is quite Dutch in facade. So I think that to show fluency, to take it past that corner and on to where the white apartment building is, which used to be the original general store for the south side of Pella, to me, would not, would not be a stretch at all. Because then you would just naturally go down, and then those guidelines would loosen a little bit more. And the bottom line is, is a lot of that property already in that area has been grandfathered in. There's not, there isn't a lot of space to build something, unless I'm missing something.
Well, it goes past those, there's a couple open lots that are, that empty lots.
There is, there is an open lot, yes.
Or more than one.
Yeah.
On both sides. And I know, I asked you this question when we were talking about it. If you were comfortable with extending the story part of it that far.
Right, because I look at, I look at that first portion of Oskaloosa, and it really is a corridor into our downtown. And it, I just think we have to retain some of that, some of that design, and then naturally loosen as you get down into the more industrial area and on to the high school on Oskaloosa Corridor. But I think to loosen it too much, especially since we have the proposed park that's going in there, which will also have a very Dutch feel to it, or that's what the proposed drawings have. It might look a little confluted if we loosen that up a whole lot.
Okay?
Would Clark Street be enough of a boundary for that transition versus Carson?
I don't know. I guess I'd have to look at it. I mean, I'd be, I'd be more than willing if we want to cable this discussion and have it again and look at it some more. I guess I hadn't looked at it that way.
That depends on what our vision would be for what we would want Oskaloosa Corridor to really turn into. If we want to encourage different uses, multi-use buildings or multifamily buildings or commercial, multi-use commercial buildings. The more transitional or contemporary you get, the more inviting that is. Because that stringency has been part of what I think has partially inhibited some of our growth historically. Totally understand the concept of having it be an introductory corridor.
Right.
I'm not trying to stay in the weeds, I promise, but...
No, that's...
...implications down the road as we dream about what Oskaloosa Corridor could be. Some of those buildings historically are Dutch, like the one you mentioned. Some are not, like Pella Court. So I mean, I think that argument can work either way, too. But Clark is obviously the main entrance off the southern exit. So one could draw your attention to the left, one could draw your attention to the right. I don't know, it seems like a more natural barrier than the border than Carson.
If I read this right, too, one thing we could do, if so inclined, we could approve as is and then maybe take another look at it, whether we want to move that green over a block or two, you know, to the west, too, just to have that in the purple there, too.
I think that this is one of those things, too. You know, maybe this is a, would merit a discussion with the CDC chair or members of the CDC. Because I, it really, as it stands, does not bother me. But I would like to involve them in, you know, why did you stop there? What was your logic? And maybe somebody here can, can tell me.
Karen?
I'm on CDC.
Karen, I didn't even see you over there. How are you? Good.
I'm on CDC. And we did, we, back and forth and back and forth, where to put this, where to put it. And if we put it there, we move the other, the west side, back and forth on that. And the thought was, when you come in on Clark Street, you come in and you hit the Dutch a little more restricted. Also, sorry. So when you come in on Clark Street, then you just hit the Dutch right away. And also, the thought is, once we lose it, we can't get it back. If we want Pella to grow, and Pella keeps growing, yeah, everything outside will keep going, but then we can never get that main Dutch back. So that's why we went to Carson, just trying to preserve a little bit more.
Right, yeah. And I really do support that because I feel like there's a lot of opportunity at the end of Oskaloosa. And again, I keep mentioning this park, but I can just see that park in my mind. And I feel like you come off the bypass and you make a left, and then it's got to be boom, you know, that you know where you are.
Right, and in our manual, if you look through that, you'll notice that we, we did a lot of research. We added some more roofline. We gave some options, like ideas for brick, ideas for structure. It doesn't always have to be tall, narrow, canal style. It could be more of a farmhouse, kind of, like a farm and a barn connected like that. So we tried to give some other options, so it's not always that tall canal.
Right.
House with the gables.
I always call that stair steps.
Yeah.
And I did notice that, and I was very appreciative of that. You know, that glossary, I just thought it was awesome. So it seems like you put a lot of thought into these boundaries, and so I will stand in support of those boundaries.
Okay, anybody else? So we haven't, I haven't entertained a motion for approval yet.
So moved.
Support.
Yeah, on public hearing.
Is there opportunity for other input or no?
No.
No? Yeah, kind of normal?
No, we had a policy and planning last meeting about it. So if anybody on council would want to ask anyone a question, they can do that.
I think, do we have another CDC member that wanted to?
Yes.
Nancy's on CDC.
Yes, Nancy, I would love to hear what you have to say.
So, do you want me to...
Yeah, can you come up? People watching can hear you then.
Sure. Thanks for giving me the opportunity here quick. We all have really, really worked hard on this, and I'm excited about where we're at with it. But I always wear the hat to kind of speak for the small business owner. And I have some concerns right now. I love the map, I feel confident in that. But we went from one major and one minor element as a requirement to two major and three minor. So the committees talked a lot about, we don't want to lower the bar. We don't want to lose what we have. We just raised the bar by a huge amount. And I just care so much about the small business. When we pull people into town, the conversation happened in our committee about what brings them to town. It's a Dutch architecture. That might bring them to town. But what keeps them coming back is the experience. The experience of our retail stores, of our restaurants, our coffee shops. We have unique small businesses here. The big guys like Chick-fil-A and Walmarts and Applebee's, they can afford to put on this much embellishment on these buildings. But our local folks are the ones that really are what make us unique and what keep people coming back for the experience over and over again. We become an attraction if it's only to look at. So I would ask to have, I liked your idea, Lynn, of having a conversation with the CDC to talk through some of these requirements because they're getting cost prohibitive for the small guy. And we all know frickin' mortar is getting harder and harder for retail today to make it and compete. So medical professions, they have a higher profit margin. Retail and restaurants, it is slim. It is so slim. So I just want to keep us thinking about the small guy, the small business owner, the people that are in town, that are here and live here and invest here, and, and think about that, too.
Do you have any feel for how many of our small business people actually...
Do, do you have any feel for how many of our small business people actually own the building they're operating in?
I don't have a feel for that. I'll, I'll share one, one example, one little story. I went, I went north, I stopped in Tama at a Quick Star and I just kind of made the comment, I was like, boy, I wish we'd get one of these to compete with our Casey's in town, it'd be great to have both options. And the cashier said, we'll never go to Pella because of how hard it is to, to get past. I mean, that's a cashier an hour away and that's her reputation, so, so how do we, how do we help people see we can make this work for them? But I don't know, by raising it from one and one requirement to two and three, I don't know how we just helped bringing people into town either. I don't think that helps our local people and it doesn't help us attract people. And I want, I want both.
Your Quick Star is not going to be in the central business district.
No, it would be.
But it's the same requirement, no matter which district you're in. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter if you're in this district or this district or this, the requirements are two and three, or all three. The only thing that changes is the list to choose from. So I, I've got big concerns on this.
So I, I missed that. What are the two and three?
The two major elements and three minor.
Which are such as?
The only ele, the only major elements are rooflines. So everybody in all three areas has to have two rooflines. They all have to have three minor elements. So it doesn't really get less demanding, your options just increase. That's what changes.
The closer you are to the central business district.
No, actually, your options increase as you go out. They're more, they're narrower options in the center to keep them to look very, very good.
Oh, I apologize, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So your choices increase as you go out.
Right.
But when you're restricted the two, to, to rooflines, it pretty much ends up being a roofline with a Dutch gable, that's pretty much your choice. I mean, not, not necessarily, architects can get creative, but I go back to, can the small business owner afford to hire architects?
I think, uh, the way I understand it, the, the design standard is still in place.
Right.
No matter where you build, there's a design standard. Now, it's zoned, it's zoned, or there's zones now, so what your options are is different than it used to be, but we still have design standards. Are you advocating to eliminate any design standards in some areas?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I'm, I would be a proponent of keeping it as restrictive as possible. I don't want to lose our downtown, that's amazing, that drew me here in 1995, I loved it. What I'm proposing is these outer areas, can we give them some more creativity and a little, can we, can we reduce it to maybe one major and two minor? Or, which is still a higher standard than where we're currently at, but gives them a little more flexibility. Even cladding has changed, we didn't used to require, like, there's no, there will be no metal anywhere except the contemporary, which is the red dotted line.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe, maybe that's okay, but again, I think we have some great looking buildings in town that have a beautiful front, but our, our 360-degree requirement on the main thoroughfares, now we, we can't do any metal on the side of any of those. And that's expensive. So how do, how do we, how do we do both? How do we protect our historic, what we've built? Because I appreciate what everybody's done on this committee for years, it's fantastic, we live in a beautiful community, but how do we keep it so that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot and preventing growth down the road? And bringing large chains to our community, well, that's great and we, we like to have those, that helps our quality of life, that is all that draws people here. It's our unique, our unique one, just our unique shops and, and restaurants and things.
I think I want to go back to my original statement.
Well, can I ask the question? I'd like to ask Jerry about this. Jerry, did CDC discuss these standards?
Yes, for the, for the last twelve months.
Yes. Did the committee take a vote on the standards?
Yes, they did.
Okay. I think it's very important that we consider the committee as a whole's recommendation, not disregarding any, any individual member's recommendation, but if they've spoken, so they have approved him, Jerry?
That is correct, but.
Was, was the vote unanimous?
It was not unanimous, Nancy just said.
Okay, and how many are on the CDC?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I'll.
Good evening, Ron Rosenbaum. I live on East First Street. What is this going to do with my property? Uh, if I recall, this was like supposed to be Main Street and Broadway, now I see East First on that. What's that going to do to my, my property? CDC, anybody?
Your property is owned residential, I believe.
Yes.
As former residential. Uh, right now, Jerry, this, these standards don't apply.
Only to commercial.
Only to commercial.
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of resolution number six, five, six, one. We got one already?
Yep, we have a motion.
Oh, we did?
On the second, right off.
I'm sorry. I got lost in the discussion. Okay, any more discussion? All right, then we will vote on the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DM.
Yes.
Rayna Horst?
Yes.
Anstr?
Yes.
Paulstone?
Yep.
Motion passed. Moving on, abstract of bills number twenty-one, twenty-two, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brandon Horst?
Support.
Anstr, any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayna Horst?
Yes.
Anstr?
Yes.
Paulstone?
Yep.
DM. Yes.
Motion passed. All right, any council member have any other business you'd like to discuss? Any member of the public have any other business that you would like to address the council with this evening? If so, please come to the mic, state your name and address, try to limit comments to three minutes. All right, hearing none, we will move into policy and planning. Oh, sorry.
Ron Rosenbaum, I realize we're, we're getting deep into the golf season and with this new rec center coming up and somewhere between thirty-five and fifty million dollars that you, you give the, uh, the government to spend, you just know where that one's going, so, um, so my question is, what does, what did Boss Landing cost us to get into? The city, the city to take over Boss Landing? Did we put some money in that? Did they just say, hey, you want to take over this and, and go from there? How much money has Boss Landing Golf Course cost us to date?
Well, I think those questions are best addressed at City Hall, so we can give you, someone there can give you an informed response to that question.
Okay, what?
Because not, I don't know that anybody has that off the top of their head, so, uh, you're welcome to contact City Hall and you can.
Yeah.
And then we'll also, during the budget process, we also will talk about the cost of operations and all of that. So it's coming, yeah.
Okay, so when I call Mike, in a couple of days he'll have that for me, or?
Well, I mean, we're.
Mr. Rosenbaum, we'd be happy to provide the information to you. We'll probably ask that you put it in writing, so we make sure we get exactly what you're asking for, Bill, but you have to give that information to you. It'll take us a few days to get it together, but that should be available, so.
Okay. Uh, speaking of budget, I thought that was supposed to have been done last month. Are we still waiting on to see if we're going to up our sales tax to see how much money we can spend? Are we waiting to see who's going to kick in for this rec center? See how much money we're going to have to spend? You know, uh, Don, you're a, you're a businessman, you, uh, your CDC ideas are great, I like them, but your building, you're just going to raise the rent to one of these poor people over here and it's not going to cost you nothing, because you're just going to raise your rent for your buildings. Um, you need to look at the, the guy on the, on the bottom side of, of some of that. I guess we'll wait and see what daylight brings, see what Urbandale had to say about their rec center, that they got to vote on, that, that we didn't get to vote on, that we got slid through on this sales tax. What are we going to do in ten years when you decide you want to build something else and you've got your sales tax wrapped up for twenty years? Are you going to put another sales tax onto it? Or are you going to quit spending money for twenty years until that's over? Thank you, have a good day.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so now we'll move into policy and planning. First item is the request from Pella Historical Society to replace the Central Business District speaker system. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, be happy to explain this item. And this request this evening comes to us from the Pella Historical Society and their request is to replace, upgrade the city's outdoor speaker system for the twenty twenty-three Tulip Time Festival. A little bit of background on this, the sound system is in need of repair for this and the Historical Society originally made this request to be submitted as part of the two thousand and twenty-four budget process. What happened with the two thousand and twenty-four budget process is council is well aware as the state of Iowa has extended the date that the budgets are certified, it used to be right around the end of March, they've given us an additional thirty days and of course with that came some additional decreases in the city's tax base on it as well. So our budget hearings are actually scheduled for March twenty, I believe, twenty eighth to twenty ninth on it. And what we have with the Historical Society, the issue at hand is the cost to install and replace the systems over two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. The Historical Society would like to have those repairs completed this spring, so the system's ready for two thousand and twenty-three Tulip Time. Mandy, if we can go ahead, please? And what they had originally proposed to the city was they wanted to contribute just over a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, with the city providing the remaining funding of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars. I, from city administration's perspective, we are recommending that amount in the city's upcoming budget. The dilemma is we have a timing on our, a timing issue on our hands. What the Historical Society would like to do is hire a firm to repair the system and get it operational before Tulip Time of this year and it's logistically not possible to consider this item during the budget session. And so what we would pose is to allow the Historical Society to repair the system this spring. Well, considering the financial request during the twenty, upcoming budget work sessions, we are recommending that amount in the city's budget already and that's of course up for council's consideration, but the Historical Society knows that if they proceed with the repair project, now they're doing it at a hundred percent at their risk. So from staff's perspective, we would like to have this project overseen by our community services department and allow the Historical Society to proceed with repairing the sound system. So Janette, is there anything else I failed to mention with this request?
No, that's it for now, unless Derek had something to add, but you covered it very well.
Covered well.
So you're just basically asking for a pre-approval and a placeholder on the budget?
That's correct. That's a good way to summarize things.
I see no problem with that. Good use of taxpayer money.
Now, are we repairing it or is this a new system? My reading of it was it was a, it's a new system, new wires.
It'll be pretty much a new system that'll be in place, yes.
So repair doesn't do the justice, this is a long-term solution.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, just move ahead with it, put it in the budget, if they're willing to, to get, get the project going without, knowing the ownership, sure. We're fine with that.
All right.
Our council is fine with that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to a discussion regarding long-term facilities plan. Mike?
Hi, this is Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. And what we're here to talk about tonight is the city's, an update on the city's long-term facilities plan. We're also here with our associated work sessions tonight, talked about indoor recreation center, specifically proceeding with additional recreation, engineering services on the rec, rec center with that. So before we get into the discussions on the rec center and proceeding with additional engineering or the next phase of the engineering process, which is the design development phase of the project, we do have an update on the long-term facilities plan. And when we talk about the long-term facilities plan, I think it's a good reminder before providing the update of, just to remind everyone what we're trying to accomplish with the long-term facilities plan and specifically early on, council identified the goals that we have up here in the second bullet point, which was to improve the quality of life in the community, attract new citizens and also increase the city's tax base. And we're also hoping specifically with the rec center, provide business and industry with an ability and a recruitment tool and also retention tool for their existing employees as well. So those were the three overarching goals with it. And what we have listed up here, and I think this was interesting for those, you know, council, that may have been on council in two thousand and fourteen, that's actually a picture, and most of this was associated with the two thousand and fourteen comp plan, but when you look at the proposed location of the rec center, back in two thousand and fourteen, that whole area was identified as a preferred growth area for the city of Pella. Most of this diagram and the associated development that we have listed up here was actually from two thousand and fourteen and plans in two thousand and fourteen to develop the east side of our community. What we did is we actually added in the recreation center and we added in some additional development that extended back out all up to the county line road as well. And I think it's a very good example, when we talk about preferred growth areas and investments in the community and specifically in light of these three goals that we have here, what we're trying to accomplish, oftentimes communities consider recreation centers because they do have additional benefits outside of recreational use for communities, oftentimes they do spur additional development. So interesting enough, this was discussed back in two thousand and fourteen as far as the preferred growth area, the proposed location of the rec center that we will be discussing this evening is in the northwest corner of the Pella Sports Park. So, again, please keep in mind as we proceed through the discussions tonight, what we're trying to accomplish with the long-term facilities plan, specifically with the proposed indoor recreation center as well as upgrades to the existing community center. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the facilities plan update is concerned, we wanted to provide an update on the latest estimated costs that we do have to the plan. What you see on the left-hand side is back in April when the facilities plan was first discussed and approved and moved forward by the city council, we had what we called a base plan. And if you're called during the discussions during our base plan, we said this was the minimum amount that we were looking to invest in both the city's community center as well as the proposed indoor recreation center. And at the time, we developed a plan that was right around forty-five million dollars in total funding for this. As far as the cost estimates that we have, the latest cost estimates that we do have, we have experienced some cost increases. During the recreation center discussion this evening, we're going to be talking about the proposed cost of just over thirty-seven million up to just over forty-three million dollars and we'll explain that once we get to the indoor recreation center. The community center, we anticipate that we should have an engineering contract in front of council within the next thirty days for consideration. That was originally established in a budget amount of five point five million dollars, so just please keep in mind that that project is literally just now starting. As far as the infrastructure cost for the project that is associated with the indoor recreation center, and I would also say, most of the project cost is the extension of University Street. The same comp plan that I showed you, the example about the preferred growth area also had the extension of University Street in it, that in fact, University Street has been in the city's comprehensive plan for a long time. The reason we have a cost increase on the infrastructure was by and large attributed to the sanitary sewer needs or requirements for the indoor recreation center. So we do have an estimated cost of both the extension of University Street as well as the extension of Baseline Drive and the, the proposed lift station provides sanitary sewer services to the recreation center. We're still keeping, maintaining our two and a half million dollars as far as overall contingency. I would be remiss if I did not say this is not the only contingency in the plan. Tonight, when we talk about the indoor recreation center, I believe we're also looking at our engineers that have design contingencies of, to somewhere around, they put a four million dollars on the building. University Street, Baseline Drive, we also have a contingency amount of about ten percent within that plan as well. The two and a half million of this is by and large attributed up to the community center what we have, and again, we're just starting off with the community center, but overall it's for the plan as a whole. So when we look at the updated cost right now, the items that we're going to be discussing this evening, the latest estimate. the latest estimated cost that we have is just over $53 million, and it could be high up to about $58.5 million. So before we proceed on with the presentation, is there any questions as far as the cost estimates that we do have, that we have for the facility plan?
Just to make sure I heard that right, that University Street extension was already back in 2014?
Yes, okay, yeah. University Street's been in the city's comprehensive plan for a number of years. That's been a core, or that's been identified outside of the recreation center project. We've included it in this project as its proposed entrance to the recreation center, but the truth is, is that core has been shown separate from the recreation center for a number of years. In fact, that diagram back in 2014 had the extension of the University Street in it already. So, and that was before the, before the indoor, before the Pella Sports Park as well. So let's go ahead. Mandy, if we could, please? Now, as far as the city's financing plan, and keep in mind when we talked about the city's long-term facilities plan back in April 2022, as far as the funding sources for it, the original plan had fundraising or other parties contributing $23 million, and the city contributed, committed up to $22 million of funding. So it was about 50/50 on that as far as funding needs for the city. Our $22 million was comprised of two sources. We had $5 million. Now, I'm using the word surplus on it, but please keep in mind, this is cash reserves on hand for the city. The reason we're using surplus is in that terminology is when you talk about city cash reserves, and you're talking about potentially transferring from one fund to another to do that legally, those have to be surplus funds. And I'll explain that further during the budget deliberations that we have later on in this month. But we still think the $5 million is achievable as far as cash reserves contributing to these two projects that the city currently has on hand. The $17 million of local option sales tax bond that was proposed back in April 2022, we're going to be talking about that later on in the presentation. But please keep in mind, and I'll elaborate further on in the presentation, that that local option bond was contributed or based on about half of the city's collections, annual collections for the new local option sales and services tax. We're still treading on dedicating approximately half of the funding towards road improvements within our community. The other half would go to the local option sales and services tax bond. When this calculation was done, at the time, we felt the $17 million was achievable. I will be discussing this in further detail once we get to that segment of the presentation. Now, today, as far as the outside funding that we have concerns, so again, the city's plans were $22 million for discussion purposes. I would still say that's on track. However, the mix between cash reserves and bonds may change as we progress with the city's facility plans. Now, as far as the outside fundraising, again, we had a goal of $23 million at the time. Today, we've raised over $13.1 million in financial pledges. Mayor Ward has also established a former committee to raise additional funds for the Pella Recreation Center. Now, before we go on with the presentation, is there any questions as far as the city's financing sources for the base plan or what was discussed back in April?
The $5 million in surplus cash? I'm looking at that up there. So your, the suggestion is, is that $5 million of surplus cash be placed into this project, correct?
Yes, what we have, and that was the direction we received from council. When we talk about the base plan and city coming up with $22 million to contribute to it, at the time, we thought this was achievable with using $5 million in cash reserves and the $17 million in bonds. So we still believe that as far as the cash reserves, we still believe that is achievable for the city. Okay, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, here's an item that we want to make sure we're all on the same page when we talk about engineering services, specifically this cash on hand that we have. Once again, we believe at June 30th of this year, we will have approximately $5 million in cash reserves to contribute to these projects. And I want to stress that would be dedicated towards these projects. What we're proposing to do is use the city's cash reserves to fund engineering services expenses for the indoor recreation center, associated infrastructure projects that are required with that, plus the community center project on it. So of this, the reason why we are proposing using cash on hand is we feel it's practical to use cash on hand to fund the engineering for these projects. And this would also allow the city council to establish the size and scale for the respective projects as well. So the reason I'm mentioning this is when we approved the engineering for the indoor recreation center, at the time, I believe we mentioned it would be paid with the local option sales and services tax. What we're proposing instead is to use cash reserves that we have for the engineering expenses. This would allow us to designate and use existing local option tax, and we'll be discussing this during the 2024 budget process to support the city's general fund on it as well. And so again, this is a change in funding sources. But here, the other item to keep in mind is when you look at the engineering cost for these two projects, and actually associated infrastructure, the engineering on the project is just shy of $5 million. We have a small contingency amount in here. But by and large, these are what we believe would be the entire engineering contracts for all of these projects that we have. And so with that, before we proceed on, is there any questions as far as funding of engineering costs for these two projects and using cash on hand for, to fund the engineering for these two projects?
I guess another question I had, will you transfer these funds to a capital projects fund? Is that the category that it goes to?
Yes, and what we would have, and that's another reason why we're using the term surplus, and that's a very good point. When the transfer happens, and let's just say it was from the city's electric utility, we will have a calculation according to industry standards of how much fund balance the electric utility should have, or any utility fund on there. Any amount over that fund balance standards could be considered surplus by the city council, and the city council would have to approve the transfer of funds over. So when we talk about funding these costs that we have here, the engineering cost up here, council would have to approve a separate resolution that we would transfer over to the capital facilities fund, or the city's capital facilities fund to pay the engineering cost.
The other thing to, I'd point out is all of these engineering costs are in those other numbers. So this isn't an additional $5 million. This is, this is the $5 million that was in the plan. So these, these costs are included in the other total cost numbers. It's just to keep the projects going and moving forward, we need to keep the engineers working on both projects, or all of these different things to keep it moving. So the proposal is to use our cash upfront for the engineering, and then the rest of it will come at the back end with construction, with start on these projects.
So this cash on hand can be used for anything, correct?
Cannot be used for anything.
I'm not saying like a birthday party.
No.
I'm talking about it could be used for if a tornado would hit our water treatment plant, and we needed to do repairs, we would go to our cash on hand and use that $5 million for repairs, right? It's kind of a rainy day fund. I wonder...
That would be insurance.
Our $5 million is a non-dedicated to one project funding source, right?
I think the best way to answer this, and I'm going to give you probably a textbook answer, is once council declares an item, their fund is surplus, it could be designated for the use that council intends for use.
Okay. So I find this to be risky. I find it to be risky because we're taking money to support a project that hasn't gotten the amount of private funding that it really needs right now. We don't have the public right of way for University Street. We have already seen in file 181 that our taxes are under scrutiny by the state government. I made a call to the Capitol today, and they are looking firmly, I spoke with Barb ear to ear, next week, they're looking at a property tax rewrite. So we're looking at not bringing in as much revenue as we have had before, and we already saw that in file 181. Now we have file 1124 and 1125 going to Ways and Means. The Senate has already looked at the fact that their main goal for property tax this year is to be able to take property taxes and give back to the citizens. So we have so many moving parts right here, including and not limiting to, we just don't have the money for this project yet. I'm of the mindset that we need to say, all right, funding committee, go back, you need to get some more money for this project. University Street, we have to work that out. We have a landowner. Are we going to buy the land? Are we going to, as I've heard, proceed with eminent domain? And of that $5 million, we have a lot of projects that are already needing improvement in our community. So I find that a risky to designate $5 million of the taxpayers' money to a project that has too many moving parts. Oh, and then I'll add this, it's an election year. So you could conceivably have a mayor and council that don't support this project. We dedicate $5 million to it, we don't get that back. And guess what the citizens get for that? Nothing. Nothing. I can't support that. It's way too risky.
I would counter that.
I'd love that, if you would.
No, I think you've got to have, it's our job to have a vision for the future. And I've got the floor.
You do.
And we, I can't speak for the state legislature. I mean, they are, they are trying to reduce property taxes, income taxes, everything. Where's the money coming from? But I have tremendous amount of confidence in our administration. Mike, Mike is not going to propose something that he hasn't looked at upside down and sideways. I really think this is a project for the future, and we have to be bold and go for it.
Mark is right on. That's what leadership is, is taking some risks and moving projects like this forward. There's tremendous support for this project in the community. If you aren't impressed with $13 million from private, that is all from private businesses and individuals so far. So you're telling me we stop these projects? I'm going back to those people and say, we don't want your money? No. That, if that isn't an indication of solid support from this community for this project, and we as leaders, it's our responsibility to move it forward, because that's what the community wants. And so I don't think we have any choice but to move it forward.
Mayor, leadership, when you're talking about taxpayers' money, means that you protect that money. It isn't that we take risks with that money. That is their money, and they have placed us in these seats to protect their money. And I highly doubt if we would tell the investors, you know, we need a little more time to make some more money on this. Do you know how long it took to do Fields of Our Futures? Ten years. And do you know why it took ten years? Because they did it methodically, and they did it with the taxpayers' interest in mind, and first and foremost, they had our city budget in mind. So if somebody is going to say, well, I withdraw my $7 million because I have to wait another year, well, then I guess they weren't all in to begin with. This is about their money. This is about protecting that $5 million that if this project does not move forward, we have absolutely nothing to show for it, except another notebook of drawings to put on our shelves. I just am saying we need to take the patient and prudent approach and get more money from private entities.
So half of it is public dollars, half of it is private dollars. I think I'll remind myself of our mission in talking about this long-term facilities plan, improve the quality of life in the community, attract new citizens, increase our city's tax base, iran for the seat, not to be yelled at every week by any means, but to be in line with a strong vision for our future, because you are either progressing or you are not. And we could have the nicest cities and sewer on the planet and sitting on a big pile of surplus dollars, but not have a sport complex, not have new development in our downtown, in our peripheries, and we could watch our population dwindle and our businesses leave. Or we could be visionary, make hard decisions towards investment. This is an investment in the business of the city of Pella. And it's half citizen dollars that have been taxed, and then it's half private dollars. I think the commitment, you know, each individual taxpayer is paying their individual tax, but your family's paying those taxes, plus large amounts of zeros towards a project that they believe in. And I feel like that's a strong vote towards to build a better community that they can attract and retain talent to. Nice streets, even sidewalks on streets which are really important, don't attract people to communities. It's amenities, it's quality of life, it's my community. Educated well, safe, have activities to progress in, et cetera. I think that's really what this boils down to. We can sit on our pile of money and feel content and safe about it, or we can invest and move forward with trying to grow and expand our mission as a community. That's what it just comes down to. I think that's what I ran on, I think that's what my vote came down to. I think that's what honestly the next few elections will come down to. And it is up to the public to decide that. But right now, we have to make this hard decision. We can wait ten years and miss out on a generation of opportunity, or we can move on. Because the dollars are there, and I agree with Mark's assessment that Mike is extremely thorough in how he plans these things, and he's looked at it up and down. And I think the numbers eventually will look back and say that made a lot of sense of where we were bold, versus, man, I wish we hadn't missed out on three generations of Rec Center use.
Well, I believe that the reason that that money is there is because the councils prior to this were very conservative and were very prudent with their spending. And we did take on big projects. We took on Pella Fiber, one of the biggest projects in this community. But we did it with the tax-paying citizen in mind. We made sure we could afford it. We took it to a vote. We made sure that's what, that's what the community wanted. We're not even really sure, because we never took this to a vote. How do we know? I don't know. I don't know. You know, if this, you know what, I wouldn't be saying this if we had all the money and it was, it's a good opportunity, yes, but it's also a very risky deal right now. It is. I say, roll up your sleeves, or get some more money, get some more people behind the project, perhaps even let the community vote on the project. I've been asking for that since the inception of the project, so I'm going to ask again tonight. I'd like the community to vote on this project. And then, if the community wants $5 million...
About would you do a quick vote right here, yes or no?
It's not quite that easy. But we do, we do have a vote coming up in November. I mean, it could be added right into that without any cost to the public. But, you know, this is why they have those big barometers in communities with fundraising projects. The people give money, the barometer goes up. This has been a really rushed project. It's probably... It probably could be a very good project, but we have to be sure that we can afford this project. And right now, two and two does not equal four. So, what I'm just saying, I don't believe $5 million of the taxpayers' money on a project that is not signed, sealed, and delivered, and all, everything lines up, and we're sure this is what the taxpayers want. It's not a yes vote for me. I will not vote for it. But I think you already smised that.
The only thing that I would maybe counter that a little bit is that with these kind of fees, it becomes a chicken or the egg, you know, type thing. You don't know how to quote something unless you get the engineering thing that goes out, you know? I'm in the banking world, I have the same thing. I will not approve a loan unless somebody spent some money to get some architectural work done, to get some estimates done. And I think with this, even if this goes by, and we, to your point, you can't afford it, those engineering services can be used later. You know, anything on a road can be used, those can be used a year from now, two years from now. That has to be done before you even know where you're going. I mean, no lender would vote on anything on a project if they haven't done the work with the estimates to do that. So, I think this is a start, and I've had people invest in this, and they didn't go forward with a project because of the costs that came out.
$5 million of investment?
Well, it's all relative. It's all relative. This will be about 10% of the process.
Mayor, can I get a make a comment? Just as a clarification, and I just want to be clear. When we talk about, everything you see up here is complete engineering fees for the entire project. What you're going to be discussing tonight with the indoor recreation center is moving ahead to the next phase of the project, which I believe is design development. That's roughly $550,000. We're also going to be discussing moving ahead with design services for University Street, which is roughly, Denny, $300,000. So, it's not the entire thing, but I wanted to be clear, when we look at long-term, how we're funding engineering expenses, I listed up the entire engineering amounts on it, so, just as a point of clarification.
I just want to add this in, because I wouldn't be true to the citizens or to any of us. We don't even have a pro forma on this building yet. We don't know how much it's going to cost us to run. There are too many pieces. We had a comment about Boss London, you know, that we haven't done all our homework on this yet. I wanted to mention the pro forma.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's move on. So, our third, are you done with this? Or you want to talk about the surplus?
Yeah. Just, I'll be brief, and we'll get to the Rec Center. Mr. Mayor, as far as the $5 million, the other portion of our bond, our funding was a local option sales and services tax bond. And if you look at those, what I would just stress is, this has been an excellent discussion tonight. We're going to be talking about these two projects within the context of the city's, not only 2024 budget, but also within our five-year plan as well. One point I would like to mention, when we talk about the $22 million investment that we're making in our community, we need to keep in mind it's comprised of using cash on hand as well as a local option sales and services tax bond. Right now, we're somewhat of a moving target. As interest rates increase on it, the size of the bond issue may actually decrease, which may require additional cash contributions. From our standpoint, we just wanted to mention that, that in case the mixture of these two changes, that the important note is that the city is striving for $22 million, and it may change, be a little bit different between additional, between cash on hand and the local option sales and services tax bond, was the point as we look at the long-term financing of the plan. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. And as we stated, so far to date, what we've raised on here is roughly $35 million, 35.1 million. The estimated cost, the latest estimates that we have and that we'll be discussing tonight are just over range between 53 up to 58.5 or 58.7 million dollars. So, the remaining funding that we have to be secured is approximately anywhere from $18 million up to $23.5 million on this. Now, from city staff's perspective, as we progress through this with the fundraising as well, the timeline on these projects is dependent upon funding for the projects. And so, we'd like council to be aware of that. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that was the long-term facilities plan. We can switch the discussion over to the Recreation Center and talk about the schematic design for the indoor recreation center, as well as future phases of the project.
Yeah. I don't want to cut anybody short. Does anybody else have any comments about the facility plan before we move into the...
Okay. All righty. Before we turn the floor, Shai Hattery, I'll give a 50,000-foot overview as far as what is being proposed with the schematic design. Shai is here tonight, Mr. Ron Heinz, and I'll let Ron introduce his team later on in the presentation. They'd like to review the schematic design with the fellow city council, and specifically, they just want to make sure everybody's on the same page that we have with this, because as we progress with engineering phases of the project, if we have to make future changes to the project, it could be associated with costs with that. So, with that, they're going to be reviewing the overall layout of the project for this as well. But generally, when we talk about the indoor recreation facility, we're talking with the proposed 78,000-square-foot facility, includes four full-size gymnasiums and indoor walking track, workout areas, two pools, a competition swimming pool, as well as a recreation swimming pool, as well as a large atrium area, meeting spaces and childcare facilities. And we do have the exterior picture of the building up on the big board as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, this is the proposed layout that Ron and his team will be discussing in further detail tonight. I'll leave it to Shai Hattery to walk us through that layout. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the estimated cost of the Recreation Center that we're going to be reviewing tonight, the overall estimated cost is, to Shai, $43.1 million. I would point out, just based on where they're at in the design, we're still relatively early in the design phase of the project. It includes a healthy contingency amount of just over $4.6 million at this point in time. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Talk a little bit with Shai, and Ron and his team will talk about alternates for the plan. But generally, the thought is, is we just wanted to mention this to the council, that if we do proceed with the engineering for the project, we will be also talking about alternates for the project. And what alternates allows to do is, is actually design the elements and basically get bids on those elements, and if financing allows, is actually add items in there. So, the thought is, is that you have a base plan that would align with the city's financial plans, and generally, you would have additional items that you would go through the design process and seek bids for. And it's been our past experience, we've had a lot of success with that at the city. I can think of the Pella Sports Park being one example, where we used a base bid that aligned with the city's financial plans. In that particular case, the actual construction bids came in significantly under the engineer's estimates, and we were able to add alternates back into the project. So, what that tells the bidder, when you design a project on this, is the base plan, you will for sure move forward with the base plan of the project. Alternates may be moved forward, depending on pricing on the project. Right now, what Shai has, just on a tentative preliminary basis, is they have designated two gyms as alternates for the plan. I'll let Shai discuss the reason for that methodology on it. But ultimately, it's up to the city council on what is included in the base plan and what is included in the alternate plans. If we move forward with the project, with the engineering for the project, we'll be working with Shai on identifying alternates for the project that will hopefully be able to align with the city, or rather, a base plan that aligns with the city's financing plan at the time. So, with that, Mandy, let's go ahead. Now, as we stated this evening, what we're looking for direction on is proceeding with the next phase of engineering for the indoor recreation center. So, that would be the design development phase. I'll let Ron and his team describe the activities that will go on with the design development fees, phase of the project. But the fees for the design development phase of the project is roughly $550,000. It is important to note, in order to proceed with the design development, Ron and his team are going to need the profile of University Street, so the University Street extension, as well as baseline drive. And the reason for this is they're going to need no profile of the street and baseline drive to be able to grade the site. So, in order to proceed with the next phase of the project, we're also going to be required to proceed with the design development phase for both University Street as well as baseline drive. Those proposed fees in that project, we'll be discussing later on after the Shai Hattery presentation. But roughly, when we look at the design fees for University Street and baseline drive, it's approximately $300,000. So, Mandy, I'm not sure if I have anything else. I think I summarized that here. With that, Mr. Mayor, that is the staff presentation. Before we turn it over to Ron and his team, is there any questions for myself?
Anybody?
I'd like to go over and turn over the floor to Ron, so please.
So, again, I'm Ron Heinz with Shai Hattery, project manager on the project, and then we have Brad Baker and Phil Parrot, architects on the project. And so, Mike has talked about this next phase for us of developing a schematic design for the project, and what we'll do during that phase is basically gather more information and more design about the project. We begin to doing structural design. We begin doing mechanical, electrical, plumbing design. And so, it's just going to be more information with more detailing. That information will give us the ability to perform, get cost estimates updated, better cost estimates for the project, and that process will take us about three months to work through that, so.
Since I'm on Team Doi, could, when you guys talk, could you please talk into the mic?
Sure. And so, we'll have Brad go through the design as it is, we'll have Brad go through the design as it is right now.
You can, you can talk right to us, everyone will hear if you go over there.
Okay. It's tough, because my, my cues are over here.
You can swing the podium a little bit back.
There you go. There you go. Thanks for sharing your evening with us. I'm Brad Baker. I'm the project designer. I'm with Ron and our project architect, and Phil Parrot is supporting everyone. This is our site plan, and so, just to orient you, here's that northwest corner that Mike explained here is our Rec Center and our parking. So, access is right off of East University Drive Extension. Here's the main access point. Here's where Parent drop-off is, bus drop-off. Your main parking lot spans out towards the east. So, your day-to-day, you park your car, and you walk down this spine into the entry plaza and into the facility. There's also parking that wraps around in the secondary parking area on the south, which is predominantly for those larger aquatics tournament events. And there's also a plaza entry experience from the south as well.
Those baseball fields down there, are they existing or are they new?
Yeah, let's go back one. Those are all existing, so they're still, yeah, those are all existing in this...
Why do we have to go across university? Spending $7 million to go to university?
Can we let him do his presentation, please? This isn't a question-and-answer session. It's his presentation.
So, when is the question-and-answer session?
We've, we've had many of those already. So, please let him do his presentation.
There is expansion opportunity for other fields, these vacant areas that you're seeing here, but this is how the sports park is right now. There's also an extension and connection from the center heart of the sportsplex over to the new Pella Rec Center. So, that, that is the kind of thousand-foot view of the site to move initially. Okay. I'm looking for our plan. I guess our plan's not in here.
No. Mandy, if you want to show.
Yeah, the overall, there we go. There we go. On your right is the first floor, so I left you off from the parking lot. There we go. Through that plaza, that front entry experience, and you walk in the front vestibule. Here, you've got a lobby. You check credentials here, administration, childcare, and you're straight on through to a decision of men's and women's locker rooms, dual-sided locker rooms. Just to walk around the facility really quickly, this is the Rec Pool, Activity Pool, and a Resistance Channel, zero entry. This is your competition, eight-lane, 25-meter, 75-foot-long competition pools, and then 500-seat spectator seating is a grandstand at the south end overlooking the sport. And the, oh, the four courts, the dry side, there's a center spine that is all your support, locker rooms and concession areas. And on your right-hand side is four courts. Each court is a full-size 84-by-50 basketball court, a full-size volleyball court, three pickleball courts, and then there's also side court, 42-by-50-foot courts, two per court system. So, a total of 12 pickleball, a total of eight smaller basketball, a total of four basketball courts and four volleyball courts. On your second floor, on your left-hand side, I'm sure it happened to my laser for you.
Brad, do you want to borrow mine?
Yeah.
I can just pop that right up here.
Okay, thank you. So, from top to bottom, you've got your men's and women's locker rooms, you've got a dual-sided party room that's rentable, and you've got your universal locker rooms here. You've got storage for court storages, your concession stand, your spectator locker rooms, excuse me, your athletic swimmer locker rooms, and then your spectator restrooms on the south end. Here's that secondary entry from the south, dry side, wet side. The second floor is a full track around the four courts. It's an eighth of a mile, so eight times around is your full mile, and that all, all those spaces, that's the second floor overlooking the courts. Also up there is the access standing room that accesses the spectator seating, and also your fitness areas up there, your cardio, your weightlifting opportunities up there, and then also a spin class, and then a dual-use flexible space that's up there that's also rentable. There's also an outdoor turf area that can be used by the public, as well as all those fitness opportunities up there can also use that turf area outside. You also have an overlook to the lobby below, and then again, your access to the track, the track area. So, these are the exterior elevations. This is your street view along that East University Drive. So, you can kind of see that, the ascending roof forms and some of those contemporary Dutch forms that we talked about in earlier presentations. The side views have a backlit silhouetted signage, Pella Rec signage, with a translucent panel behind it that allows that to glow at night. And then, these are sections that are cut right through, so you're actually cutting through the lobby entry area and that recreation pool, and you're seeing some of the pool slides and features that are in there, and you're seeing both pool cutaways. There's the spectator seating beyond, there's the track above, and then the support space, that spine down the middle is the support space. This is a view from across the courts. You're seeing that track element that circulates that second-floor area. You're also seeing the expression of some of the structure that's inside of the facility and the glass that's on the corner that kind of allows you to peek in and out of the facility and add some of that exterior drama. This is that, the leisure pool, that Rec Pool component, it's on the wet side there. Here's the zero-entry pool, toddler spray feature, Resistance Channel around the base of the two-story slide, and then your Activity Pool. It can be impromptu basketball and volleyball court, volleyball nets can be suspended across or for that, for different activities. And now, you're overlooking the competition side, full eight lanes of competition and 500 seats for spectators, standing room area at the back. And now, you're at that standing area overlooking the competition lanes. Now, you've just gotten out of your car, and you're walking down that spine on your way to the, to the entry plaza, and your, the facade on both corners kind of lifts up and allows you to see some of the events that are happening inside. It's a night shot, just showing some of the warmth and invitation by the community at night. Now, we actually walked into the plaza area, you get a really good, good view of the different materiality, translucent panels and opaque metal panels that allow you to see the facility. And then also this cantilevered element, we call this the Pella Room. It's that dual-purpose activity room on the second floor that gives you access to the turf area, that roof, that roof area. Just a different night, night environment shot. Now, we're on the aquatic side, this is kind of a corner coming from Pella. You get to see some of the activity peeking through. That two-story slide element allows people to circulate up a stair just behind that glass, and you can see in and see out. More of an evening, evening time shot. And then this is, again, your East University Street elevation shot. Night, night view to Captain's Dock, is that's.
I have one question, so if someone asked me, I was showing this to someone, someone asked me about the glass features in the corners there. How much light comes in, is there danger of getting in people's eyes? I, I don't know. I didn't want to answer the question.
Yeah, well, predominantly, those two corners, this side and the other side, is north-facing. So the sun travels in our southern, southern view, so no, you get more of an ambient type of natural lighting than you would direct lighting. But it does peek in from the east and west a little bit. Any other questions?
My wife is one of a whole group that daily does the aerobics and the water class. I hear lots of comments about inadequate locker rooms, or when they get out, is seven, seven shower stalls adequate?
Yeah, we think for the capacity, we won't size the locker rooms for that is adequate. There's also the two sides, there's the wet side and the dry side, and so as the locker rooms need additional space, you can overflow into that second, second side depending on what tournaments happen.
There's also the three standalone, there's also the three standalone family-type facilities too, so.
A great point.
So there's really ten, up to ten showers in that main.
That center area, we have more cabanas.
I remember that, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Do you want to add something, Jeanette?
No, Doi's just trying to get the clock.
Oh, okay. All right, any questions for these guys?
It's awesome.
Yeah, the, these guys and the team that worked with them did a great job of planning the facility, that's for sure. First-class, so, thank you.
Something that impresses me, is it's been in the paper with Grimes or somebody is building an indoor rec center for forty million dollars.
Johnson.
Johnson. They don't have nearly the amenities that this is going to have.
No aquatics.
No aquatics, no.
Could you have some outdoor?
Yeah, some outdoor, correct.
All right, let's move on to our last item.
Yeah, what we have here, Mr. Mayor, is the discussion on University Street as well as the Baseline Drive extension. As a part of the plans for the indoor recreation center, and I want to preface my comments, University Street is something that's been shown in the city's comprehensive plan for a number of years. But in order to place the recreation center in the northwest corner, it will be necessary to extend University Street from two hundred and fortieth place up to two hundred and fiftieth avenue, as well as extend Baseline Drive, that would give two entrances to the Pella Sports Park. As far as the engineering contract to do that, we have a total proposed contract from Garden and Associates on this matter. Mandy, if we move to the second slide, please. An amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars on this. And Garden's fees are broken down with the preliminary design fee phase of the project, which is what Shai would need to be able to proceed with additional for the development phase of the recreation center. Those design fees are just over three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Now, overall, Garden is estimating for the extension of University Street as well as Baseline Drive, is a total estimated cost of five point six, six million dollars as far as the construction of those two spaces. So with that, again, the engineering and the preliminary design phases necessary to be able to establish the grading plan for the recreation center. Danny, is there anything that I missed on the highlights as far as these engineering contracts that we have for University Street as well as Baseline Drive?
I can tell you have it.
This includes rec trail, sewer, all of that.
What we have is the recreation trail on, on the, on the contract, so that would be right now.
This includes a ten-foot trail from two forty-eighth all the way to the rec center. We're not sure of the path through the sports complex to pickup, or, you know, we're not sure of that path, but relatively short distance, I don't know.
And then with this contract too, Danny, we will be talking to Garden about adding on a connecting trail from University Street down to the Pella Sports Parks, who we connect with this trail on the west end, west side of the sports park. That's a minor component of the contract that we plan on adding that in as well.
That's another reason for the coordination needed between us and Shai, to let them know where we're at, where they're at. Maybe pieces of that will be in their parking lot, design too.
Well, I would argue that if we didn't do anything else, this needs to get done. If you've been out at our sports park on a Saturday morning during soccer season, it is a traffic and parking nightmare. And so we need more access. Along with adding a bike trail, right now, our kids cannot ride their bicycles to the sports park safely. There's no way. And so this is a vital part of this whole process, is getting this done for access to the current sports park. It'll only be enhanced more with an indoor rec facility there.
As I view it, the rec facility is a wonderful dream. This is ketchup. We really need to do this.
So do we ascertain the public right-of-way first of University Street from the property owner?
Or we need to design to figure out what we do need as far as that.
How much we need.
Because if you picture, you're going down through, there's a lot of dips and valleys, so the cuts and fills, we'll need what's called temporary easements, and then the permanent eighty feet. So to determine that, we need to get on with this preliminary design, so we get to plan a profile and know where those slopes chase out to.
Okay.
Question, all these, this, this, and this, you're proposing is going to be all housing, residential? What was all the white all the way, or the yellow all the way around there had all the parking lots in it previously doesn't?
The parking lot was for the rec center.
I think it's way back to twenty fourteen.
Oh, the twenty fourteen, the comprehensive plan?
So, so what are you going to put in here?
We have no plans to put anything in there.
Okay, so, so when, when we decide to build houses out here, you guys decide to build houses out here, what are you going to charge?
We're not developers, so we wouldn't build houses.
Okay, your story's thick, Roger. What are you going to have for buy-in on this? How are, are these people going to pay for all this, or are they going to hook up for free?
I'm not understanding the question, hook up to what?
Right here, you got a ten-inch, you got sewer line, proposed water line, twelve inches. Okay, if we didn't have housing all out here, would we need a twelve-inch, could we do it with an eight-inch?
I think you're going to talk about the sewer, Mike.
Okay, so what's going to be the buy-in on this when it comes time to build houses out there? Can't tell me you ain't going to build houses out there, Roger, that's.
And as I understand it, Ramir Manufacturing has acquired a whole bunch of land to the north there, right?
What was that, Mark?
Ramir Manufacturing has acquired a whole bunch of land to the north of that, that would be on the south side of Ramir Road.
Over there, John Ramir's place.
Mr. Mayor, what we're here to talk about this evening is the infrastructure out here. As far as concept plans, we were simply alluding to the city's comprehensive plan identified the school areas for growth area. There was a development concept plan in the city's comprehensive plan that we have. Any type of development that would occur out here, in addition to what we talked about, the recreation center, University Street, Baseline Drive, would all follow city development policies that are specified in the city code. So if you built houses out there, those fees are already outlined in the city code as far as hooking up and connecting to city infrastructure on it as well. So I do have one, the sanitary sewer option, we want to make sure we discuss with council as well. What we have here, and we've, we've talked about different types of, or different options for the city sanitary sewer option. The option that we're examining here is, is basically a sanitary sewer option that would serve the Pella Recreation Center only on this. The engineering fees that we would have for this is just over a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The lift station in Forest Main that would be necessary to serve the rec center, total project cost is probably a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So Danny, is there any additional comments on the sanitary sewer options for the rec center?
That one covered. This sewer basically just serves our site. This lift station will serve the rec center, will be picking up the sports park, the sand filler was always known to be temporary. It'll last ten years or twenty or more, but just give us the ability to pick that up, get up to Forest Main, that we just put in two years ago.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. So what we're looking for is direction tonight from the city council, specifically with the Shai Hattery contract, proceeding with the design development phase of the project, which is approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Proceeding with design services for University Street, Baseline Drive, and associated trail for approximately three hundred and nine thousand dollars. And then two, proceeding with this in the near future, we anticipate having an engineering services contract for the sanitary sewer, actually, infrastructure for the project as well. So, Mr. Mayor, those are the items we're looking for direction on this evening from the city council.
Yeah, will these, will these contracts be ready for a vote on the twenty-first?
They could be.
I think we should. Get them on, get them on our one-first agenda if we can, so we can make those, make that decision.
Okay.
All right, anybody, anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There is one, I'm sorry, miss. This is just an informational item for the fellow city council. A little bit of background on this, on this project, the mayor and I recently had a meeting with Congress, Congresswoman Mary Ann Miller Meeks out here. And as a result of the meeting, we were talking about a variety of projects, but we just wanted to make sure council was aware that we will be submitting an application to assist with the city's finance, long-term facilities plan and financing options of the federal government. Those applications are due on March sixteenth, so we're in between council meetings. And we just, it's more of an informational item that once we make the request, we wanted to make sure council was aware of that and answer any questions beforehand. Right now, it's still in the draft, draft stages, but again, it's, it's something that could be difficult to arrange, a special council meeting on it. And we wanted to just make sure you were aware that we will be submitting an application.
Right now, you're wearing two hats, is there any progress on the finance director?
We're still actively working on that one too, as well, so.
You're, you're carrying a load.
Sorry, I cut you off.
No, that was, that was my fault, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I, so this is just an informational item, so thank you.
Okay, so now, Leonard, let's see.
Is some move still good?
Your some move is still good, Danstra. Be on, all in favor, please say I suppose no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Most passed, we are adjourned, thank you.